Good evening and welcome to the February 12, 2024 work session of Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have two items for discussion. The first is the Gaithersburg Hoarding Task Force History and Update, and the second is the Financial Empowerment Center Program and Outcomes Update. So, first things first, I'm going to turn it over to Maureen and hear from our Hoarding Task Force.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us here tonight. I'd like to first make some introductions. As the Mayor said, I'm Maureen Herndon, Division Manager, Community Services. I'm here with Emilio Cabello. He is a Code Administrative Officer III with our Neighborhood Services Division and also Coordinator of the Task Force. Jocelyn O'Rourke is here. She's the owner of Moving Forward Services. She represents our contracted professional organizer for the Task Force. And I have the pleasure of introducing Dr. Elizabeth Bell. She's here. A psychologist, Dr. Bell actually was instrumental in starting this Task Force and has been an incredible source of expertise. She's a national expert on hoarding behaviors. So, thank you, Elizabeth, for all your support.
Welcome to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for your ongoing support. We're hoping this will not only give you an update into the Gaithersburg Hoarding Task Force, but also provide a source of information for our city residents if they are interested in hearing more of how they could potentially take advantage of the services or have general questions. The Gaithersburg Hoarding Task Force, believe it or not, was established in 2005. I can't believe how old it is at this point. It is coordinated by the city's Neighborhood Services and Community Services Division. So, we work hand in hand. It's a unique model, and as a city, we should be really proud that we have this. The mission of the Gaithersburg Hoarding Task Force is to assist and support people and their families who are in need as a result of hoarding behaviors. We strive as a Task Force to raise awareness and educate the community and other service providers about hoarding issues and the resources available.
Okay, so I kind of want to give you a little breakdown of what hoarding is. Hoarding is a mental disorder under the Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders, or also known as the DSM-5. Right now, it's currently under the TR, which is the Text Revision Edition. Hoarding Disorder is defined as excessive acquisition of material regardless of the actual value of the item with the difficulty in discarding those possessions and the disorganization of those items. Believe it or not, hoarding disorder actually affects 2% to 5% of the nation's population across all demographics. Why do people exhibit the hoarding or symptoms or behaviors? It can be because there's a high percentage mimicked by what they lived through. So, their parents could have had that disorder, and they learned from their parents. They could have experienced a traumatic event, whether it's a loss of a family member, a significant other, a very close friend. And also, the hoarding disorder does have a close relationship with the OCD spectrum, the ASD spectrum, ADHD, and also dementia. Also, the signs and symptoms that affect these conditions can be obstructed pathways, doors and windows to the residents, which can affect the living conditions, whether it's a townhouse or an apartment complex for any emergency examples or problems. What we want to do is we want to make sure that these properties meet the minimum living standards where there's proper pathways for emergency services. So, if we need to get a gurney in there to transport any person, anybody out there if they have any kind of medical emergency, we want to make sure that these pathways do meet ADA standards, which is usually like a 36-inch pathway. As I mentioned before, clutter does interfere with the basic living functions. So, for the safe usage of these minimum standards, just like the kitchen or the bathroom, or even your bedroom and living rooms. Hoarding also affects infestations. So, there could be a roach or rodent infestation in association with these properties that can affect that property and others as well. As I also mentioned, the fire load is compromised in these properties, and that also could be the weight of the amount of items that are in there that could affect the structural stability of the property. For example, if your second floor is overloaded, it can collapse on you on the first floor. Or also, the fire hazard as well. Just think of it as a matchbook. Have you ever lit a whole matchbook at the same time? It's the same concept with these properties. So, if there's any actual fire, the property can be like a whole matchbook. Also, the last symptom would be isolation distrust. This is an embarrassing time for the people that go through this kind of condition. So, they isolate themselves from the world. That's why you'll see people block windows or they don't... They'll order groceries instead of going out because they don't want anybody to see the conditions of the property. So, they won't let their maintenance team in to fix any leaks or anything like that that happens in the property that may affect any neighboring properties. The Hoarding Task Force is comprised of a multi-jurisdictional, multi-departmental team. So, we start off with both Community Services and Neighborhood Services as the city representatives for the Task Force. But we also have representation within Adult Protective Services, Child Protective Services, the HOC, Housing Opportunity Commission. We have members from Fire and Rescue, our professional organizer, mental health professionals, and even with Rebuilding Together, our nonprofit organization.
We wanted to take a quick second just to thank the members. I have to stress, most of these members have been with us since 2005. They do this on their own time as part of their regular busy jobs. And we truly appreciate case to case, monthly, them coming together and helping us through these difficult situations. So, a special thank you to Elizabeth. As I said, Julia from Montgomery County Aging and Disability, Rebecca from Housing Opportunities Commission, Avital Graves, who just is trying to start the Montgomery County Task Force from Fire and Rescue, has been with us for a long time, as well as Terry from Adult Protective Services, Jim Resnick, some of you may know, from Montgomery County Fire and Rescue. In addition to being on the Task Force, he also helps us get installation of free smoke detectors for our seniors. Josie Makin is with County Health and Human Services Search Worker. Gabrielle Garcia is with Rebuilding Together, and Jocelyn O'Rourke is our professional organizer. I wanted to tell you a little bit of the history before we get into kind of how we handle cases. Like I said, this started in 2005. Kevin Roman, a head of Neighborhood Services, and myself were notified of an extremely severe case in the city of Gaithersburg. Neither of us really knew what we were doing, to tell you the truth. And we just jumped in and literally started trying to help the person declutter like an impossible situation. I decided to go back to the office and do some research. So, we spent the Fairfax and Arlington for over a year. They've had task forces. And finally, several people gave me the name of Dr. Elizabeth Bell. That was a saving grace. She basically told us we were doing everything wrong. We needed to start over.
That's very true.
And we really needed to be trained and understand this complicated and very sensitive challenge that a good number of our city residents have. So, we took her advice. We went to trainings. She joined the Task Force. We pulled the Task Force together, and case by case, we've been moving along all these years, doing some good work and never stopping the education for all of us because it's a very complicated situation. So, we formed the collaborative effort. We realized from the beginning, we couldn't do this alone. We needed to have people around the table from different professions, including, like Emilio said, the mental health component, the code component, the professional organizer. I mean, I was actually out there doing organizing work for the first year. So, little did anybody know. But, you know, the key is having a professional organizer that's trained in doing this kind of work. Eventually, the city was gracious enough to put money through CDBG to hire an organizer and to support the Task Force in general. And then eventually, it was incorporated into our city budget of $10,000, and we hope to see potentially a little bit of increase there, depending if that's approved. But I appreciate the $10,000 very much, and that's what we use annually to contract with our organizer.
So, recently, in our time with the Task Force, we've done five comprehension trainings, which is a combination of mental health organizers, other code enforcement officers throughout the state of Maryland, caseworkers. And it's all in effort to build capacity and the education to assist each other with cases. We have done... We've handled 60 cases from 2009 to 2021. In 2022, we've handled 20 cases alone. In 2023, we handled 17. And then six of those were with professional organizers. We currently have one new case here in 2024, and we are still handling nine open cases. We have handled cases with different types of demographics, ranging from veterans, the elderly, retired, men, women, couples, families, and all different types of races. So, we just want to make sure that this service is for everybody and what type of cases we are handling.
Can I add one thing to this?
Sure.
There's five comprehensive trainings. There are actually ones as a Task Force we actually gave to the community, not that we attended. So, we have people from all over the state at the Activity Center. That is top priority on our list. We haven't done one in a while. Again, like Emilio said, to build capacity because we can't do this all by ourselves. And I also wanted to point out the professional consultations. This has been off the charts. I don't know what's going on with this. We've had 10 in the last three weeks alone from not only all over Maryland, including Baltimore City, but, you know, continues across the country, we're getting calls. We must come up and Google when people... But it's kind of an honor for the city of Gaithersburg that we definitely have people reaching out. Everybody wants us to provide intervention, and we have to explain, "You're not a city resident in Iowa." So, but I'm tracking these, and it's very interesting. Emilio's getting them, and I'm getting them. Dr. Bell's getting them, just cause people looking for help.
We've even done consultations with these cities on how to start their own Task Force. For example, we've done it with Baltimore County. We've done it with condominium associations as well because they want to do something within their bylaws to help out their properties.
So, these are the critical components that make up our model. And I do want to point out that these kind of ebb and flow depending on the resources that we currently have and what's going on with our cases. So, we have service coordination. So, that's kind of where Maureen comes in and makes sure everything is set up properly, and we have all the resources in place for the specific case. And then we have code compliance enforcement, and that's where Emilio comes in, makes sure everything is up to code and standards. The professional organizing, that's where I come in and work with the client one-on-one. We go over, you know, logistically, what should be kept and what doesn't make sense to be kept. It is very hand-holding and being understanding of their feelings and respectful of their belongings in a way to also get to the goal that we need to get to. There is emotional support and mental health counseling as well. At the moment, we don't have that. So, again, with the resources ebbing and flowing, and that is a huge component for our Task Force that goes right alongside with all the other resources we're providing. And then we also continue to educate, support, and train, as we've said, to help build the capacity of this Task Force.
So, the process usually starts with the initial complaint. And the complaint will vary from neighbors, families, Fire and Rescue, police. So, when we are alerted to these complaints, ultimately, it gets funneled down to me where I would go out into the field and conduct inspections and investigations. So, I would gain the trust or attempt to gain the trust of our clients and let them know that we're here to help. And once I do gain access to the property and make an assessment to see how the conditions are, that's where I would issue the notice of violation to the property to let them know, "Hey, we do have an issue here, but we're here to help at the same time." And that's where I would take all the information that I would gather, and I would report it back to Maureen and the rest of the Task Force, where we would come up with a game plan to see what resources, what departments, or what agency needs to get involved. And Maureen would also follow up with the client where we would do the contract agreements where they agree to let the Hoarding Task Force work with them, and that way, we can get it done in a certain period of time because we want to make sure that this does not drag out too far in time.
So, when I come in, we work on goal setting first. So, that's the kind of breakdown, right? It's very overwhelming to begin. So, it's sort of making things into small goals and deadlines that we can reach together with the client, so it's manageable for us to get there. Then, from goal setting, there's education. So, I'm working with the client, and I'm training and teaching them a process that works for them. So, homework is provided along the way in between sessions. And each client's a little different, and their housing situation's different. So, while I have lots of tools and experience doing this, it also changes a little differently for each client as I learn, "Oh, this worked well for them, and this didn't." So, there's a learning curve a little bit in the beginning. But once we create those goals and we learn together, then it continues to sort of go along in a good direction. And then, obviously, the resolution is meeting the standards that Emilio set in the beginning. We also have the mental health, which is provided during and after. Again, I want to point out that at the time, we don't have this, which is a really important resource. So, while I'm working with the client, ideally, they'll be getting those one-on-one sessions with the mental health provider because I'm providing the logistics of it. But then they can get that support as needed while they're going through what I'm going through with them as well. And then after it's done and we've met our standards, they would then continue with aftercare with the mental health provider as well.
I do want to add that with the process here, we want to make sure that confidentiality is a strong factor with us. So, we never discuss each case by name. We actually give it a code name based on the street or the complex that they live in. So, say, West Deer Park or East Deer Park, you know, that aspect. We just want to make sure it's for safety and for confidentiality and out of respect of the client's name.
So, this is the clutter scale that we refer to often on the Task Force. This is from the International Obsessive Compulsive Disorder Foundation. You can take a minute to look at. You see the variety of different images here. So, our cases, our average case ranges from a five to a nine. And so, honestly, there's been cases on the Task Force, the nine, where things are even up to the ceiling, which is a little bit more than the picture in the nine here shows. But you can just sort of take it in and absorb what the variety of cases that we do and what's going on in the client's home.
We wanted to point out some overall challenges in working with folks that are experiencing hoarding behaviors. One of them is budget and funds. We really take a lot of time to figure out where people are financially. If they do have financial funds, we do look for them to assist with the paying for the organizer or for a SURFO to come in or for securing of the dumpster. Most of our situations, though, have been low to moderate income and really haven't had... It can get very expensive, very expensive. Workloads for the client can be overwhelming. There sometimes really has to be a timeframe because we work closely together. There's a lot of caring, a lot of support for people. But at the same time, especially if it's an apartment complex, the city and Emilio and his staff and all are responsible for the overall health and safety of the whole building. So, sometimes we have strict timelines to get things done for the safety of the whole. So, that really has to be looked at, and sometimes things are sped up quicker than what ideally you'd want to do, but it's necessary. Mental health is always a huge issue, as has been mentioned a couple times. We used to work with two agencies that provided direct mental health services as well as a support group for families and a support group for clients. Both of those agencies have stopped providing those services, and, you know, mental health services in general are tough to get right now. We have put it in the scope of service for FY25 Health and Mental Health Grants this year. So, we already had a couple inquiry calls about, like, what does that mean? How much do we have to do for the Hoarding Task Force? But we have our feelers app. But if anybody knows of anybody that potentially could work with us and our clients around this, please let us know. Securing agencies to offer support services hasn't been a huge challenge, but it depends on the situation. We try to use... If a client that comes to us and they already have a case manager or already have family or friends that can help, we definitely pull them in to the situation to help out. Securing clean-out services can be tough, you know, both through the procurement process that we have and just costs. It's extremely expensive. I took yours.
It's okay. So, pushback from the client is definitely a challenge as well. So, this can range from procrastination or, excuse me, not completing the homework that I assigned them or the full amount of homework that I assigned from them. It also relates back to what Emilio said before about just creating that trust in the beginning and them being not completely trustworthy of us as a Task Force and doing the best interest for them. Then also, them not wanting to get rid of the items themselves that don't make sense to be there anymore. So, there definitely is a pushback from clients depending on the case as well.
The last bullet point, this talks about ignoring or refusing the entire situation. There are people that do not want to deal with it. It's too much for them to handle. Unfortunately, we still have to do our jobs. So, as code enforcement for the city of Gaithersburg, I still have a job to do. I still have a process to follow. So, I do have other tools and methods if they don't want to work with us. I'd go with the notice of violation that I told you before. But if they don't want to follow that, I do have the authority to issue municipal citations, take that to court to get an abatement order, like a court order, or even condemning the property to make sure that we can get it into a safe condition. Additional services that we do provide, as I mentioned before, is we do provide mental health training with continuing education units for mental health specialists. It's been a few years since we've done one, but we are trying to get one ramped up so we can do a presentation this year. I also do a training course for other code enforcement agencies throughout the state of Maryland, where I also provide continuing education units for property maintenance certifications. And we do community partner training workshops with associations and with other community organizations to help spread the word. As Maureen mentioned before, we do consultations. We've received them as far as Washington, Wisconsin, California, all over the nation, north, south, east, west. And then, of course, our PR and education materials. So, the website on the city of Gaithersburg website and the postcards that we have provided with you today. So, our contact information is provided to you guys. If you have any questions or concerns, feel free to reach out to myself or to Maureen, and we're more than happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Thank you so much to all of you for the presentation and for this good work that you're doing. I have... I've known about the Hoarding Task Force. I can't remember if we've had a presentation like this. So, this is helpful to put it all together. And I was curious, reading the background material, about how often this was an issue inside the city of Gaithersburg. You answered it in the package 60 times in that one 12-year span, and then a lot more after lockdown.
Yeah. So, with COVID, a lot more people have noticed the conditions and have reported more to us. So, the case count and the case numbers have gone up since COVID.
Yeah.
But that's nationally, I mean, internationally. Like, the statistics are... It's not just the city of Gaithersburg. I mean, it's all over. Has about the same statistics.
Is it your opinion that COVID and lockdown just revealed the problem that was there? It wasn't that it caused more. It's just...
Well, it's a little bit of both. So, with everybody being locked down, it was made more noticeable.
Yeah.
But at the same time, being locked down, it gave the opportunity for those people that have those conditions to excel more. So, more with the home order, the groceries, and the online ordering and everything.
You know, as we get further and further from lockdown, this is an aside, but it's kind of amazing the breadth of ways that it disrupted our lives and changed so many things and brought so many things to light. You talk about tasks, you know, the desire to expand the number of task forces in different jurisdictions. In Montgomery County, in this area, are we... Does Rockville have one?
Rockville does not, but Montgomery County used to have one, and they're currently working on re-establishing the Task Force. We're actually part of the county Task Force as well as giving them advice because they want to follow our model.
Yeah, because there's obviously county participants in the task, like, members of the Task Force.
We are kind of lucky to get all of them because right when ours was starting, the county was trying. We were advising the county. The county came up with a lot of good policy, but they never implemented the actual steps. So, that's where they are now. They're done with the policy, and hopefully, this time, they will implement the steps because it's definitely needed outside the city limits.
Okay.
But I don't know of any other... Baltimore County had a training. They were going to start one. Anna Rundle was looking to start one. You know, so there's more, it seems like, ready to start ones.
The only other one that I know that is active is in Virginia, Fairfax County.
Yeah, they were one of the original.
They're one of the founding ones.
They helped us in the beginning.
Well, kudos to you all for blazing that trail. It's really great. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for all the work that you do. Dr. Bell, thank you for steering us in the right direction way back when. Jocelyn, and Emilio, and Maureen. It can be such a devastating condition for folks. When I worked in television, one of the shows that I worked on was one of the hoarding shows, and it was just astounding, some of the, you know, the number nines on your list there. your, on your list there and worse, some of the footage coming back. When I was an HOA president, we had a suspected hoarding house in our neighborhood and was working with Kevin to try just to even gain access to the property. So I've seen firsthand kind of the challenges that you all have to deal with. And it's, it's concerning that the, the mental health aspect of this is lacking at the moment. Is it from a lack of funding that it's just not worth it for the providers or where is the biggest challenge that, you know, you need help with from us?
I mean, over the last few years, the two big agencies that kind of pulled away from all of it, definitely I think had to do with their internal capabilities to like add that on, especially during COVID. Because it takes specialized training. I mean, it's not, you have to become familiar and professional about it for the intervention. I don't know, Dr. Bell, do you want to add anything to that?
Well, if you're going to speak, I want you to come up to the microphone, please.
And the support groups were fabulous because they at least provided that kind of group setting when we were close and then Dr. Bell provides consultations to us on the best way to handle it. But what, why do you think there's a lack of the direct?
Well, I think there's a number of pieces which you did touch on as well. There's not as many therapists who are trained to treat hoarding disorder. I think there's a lot of misconceptions about what the treatment involves. There's an idea of people who are struggling with hoarding disorder don't want to change their circumstances where very often it's more not knowing how to, not having the supports or resources to be able to do that. And then unfortunately, therapy can be very expensive. Most specialized providers don't participate with insurance because there's a very poor reimbursement rate for those service providers. So if we're looking at somebody who has limited financial means, then what resources do they have, what's available through their insurance? Most providers who accept insurance do not have this specialized training or don't have the flexibility with their schedule to be able to work as intensively with someone. I have the luxury, I can do a two-hour appointment instead of a standard 45-minute appointment. I can travel to the person's home and do the therapy in their home and help them work through their stuff there as opposed to someone who's bound by the office and what their billable hours are. So I think that that makes it very difficult as well. And then just as we've known, especially with COVID bringing to light, just how so many clinicians are being bombarded with the requests and needs for mental health services across the spectrum. And more therapists are actually stepping out of the field because they're not getting the compensation for their work and honestly, they're burned out. This is very tiring and demanding work. So an individual is only really able to have a limited number of hoarding cases that they're working with because of wanting to have a distribution, a variety in their caseload so that they're able to stay engaged and take care of themselves as well.
Obviously, the need is, is very great. The, the fact that we're getting so many inquiries from across the country, well, one, I think it means that we're doing a really good job on SEO, so good job by Courtney and Katie. But two, it just shows the leadership that the city has been providing for decades that we're doing things like the hoarding task force, like the Financial Empowerment Center that really are kind of trailblazing and, you know, I'm, I'm proud of the work that we do and hopefully that this gap in, in mental health services will be short-lived because as we, we all know that that is the most important piece to prevent them from relapsing. If, if you do get them cleared, cleared out, but they haven't done the, the mental work, then they're just going to be back in the same situation. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, go ahead.
Just a few clarification questions. On packet page 12, the number of cases, what's the composition of them in terms of elderly, adults or any minors in terms of what's?
So as far as...
Oh, the demographics?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, the demographics?
Yeah, like overall.
Overall, so we handle, a good amount of them are at the least in their mid-40s and up.
Are these like individuals or families?
So we've had a combination of individuals, couples and family.
Mostly individuals.
Mostly individuals, but we have had the occasional family or couple.
Okay.
And then...
We haven't had little kids.
Yeah, the families are adult children.
The family are adult children.
Yeah, the, the family, yeah, adult children.
And the cases are unique, not one person coming back five different...
No, they're unique.
Unique. And then on, on the therapy and treatment, how much of it is like counseling and organization versus is there a therapeutic component to this as well or what's typically the approach?
That's the ideal model. That's what, and we've had that part solidly in the intervention for many years, but we're weak on that part right now. So what we've done over the last couple of years and even before was try to concentrate on raising capacity, like if maybe we can't get a Dr. Bell to work with every single case. But we can at least make sure every caseworker and social worker that serves the city of Gaithersburg has a level of, you know, a high level of education around hoarding and hoarding interventions. So that was kind of our philosophy, that we could at least pull in people that are somewhat in the field that have background. And same with Jocelyn, Jocelyn's been to several trainings and like not every organizer is equipped or has that mental, at least the understanding of the mental health and what to do, the do's and don'ts. So we're trying to make it work that way, even though we don't have like an intense mental health. Some people have it, some people have it, you know, already working with somebody.
Right. Based on the demographic, that's why we would also pull somebody like aging disability, Adult Protective Services.
Oh, CSWs from there.
Yeah, because they also like crisis intervention teams that the county has.
So they come in, you know, each case we like pull whatever we can. But aging and disability in Montgomery County has been fantastic. They've started on the task force, they met us during COVID, had a tough case we had, what, for two weeks they were coming out.
Yeah.
Or longer.
It was between Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Yeah. So they've been very helpful with some of the serious cases.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Maureen, and to the team, to Dr. Bell and Emilio and Jackie.
Jocelyn.
Jocelyn. Thank you, thank you all for this presentation and for the work that you do. I, I came to learn about the hoarding task force because Montgomery County Sheriff's Department was trying to serve a warrant and found a hoarding situation and for some reason found it a good idea to contact me and I contacted you guys, which was a much better option. So thank you for the work that you do. One of the terms that you used surprised me and it was OCD. So when I, when I think of it, I think of the excessiveness to put things in order. So it's interesting to hear it and used in a hoarding sense. Can, can you talk about that?
Can I talk about that?
Come on up.
We'll look at the doctor.
I'm now putting my hat on, I'm president for the Mid-Atlantic Regional Chapter for the International OCD Foundation, so the OCD Mid-Atlantic. So hoarding consists of a spectrum and within that, sorry, OCD is a spectrum of disorders, including what we think of as obsessive-compulsive disorder, which can be stereotypically the excessive hand washing, the perfectionism, wanting to make sure things are just right. Also within this spectrum, we have hoarding disorder, body dysmorphic disorder, body-focused repetitive behaviors such as trichotillomania, hair pulling and skin picking. So these are all related disorders. So originally hoarding was seen as maybe a subset of OCD, but they're actually related to one another where with hoarding, there's, there is a lot of perfectionism, wanting to make sure that things are done right, but if I'm going to mess it up, if I'm not going to do it right, let me put it off until tomorrow because maybe I'll do it better tomorrow. So there's avoidance of that emotional discomfort or distress. And what happens is the more avoidance there is, the more accumulation there is of the stuff. And then we get to what we see with the clutter image rating scale, the accumulation of stuff, so that way spaces cannot be used for their intended purposes. But we see a lot of anxiety, a lot of distress, a lot of wanting to have things done in a particular way, worries about what if I'm caught unprepared, what if I'm not ready for something? It's like the Boy Scout motto of be prepared, but it's run amok. It's being prepared for whatever could possibly come up. So there is growing research about how OCD and hoarding are connected. And actually, the International OCD Foundation has a number of resources on their website specifically just for hoarding. They're seeing it as an established enough separate diagnosis that they now have a separate conference just for hoarding in addition to their OCD conferences because we see there's a lot of overlap, but there's enough difference as well because of that emotional discomfort that comes along with it.
Wow, that's interesting, that's really interesting. I would have never thought that. Thank you.
Rob?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you all for the wonderful services you do. This is just another shiny example of the way that our city serves our residents and apparently serves residents and organizations far afield. So kudos to you. I'd say Neil's got the clutter scale pulled up. I'm about a three, so this is probably as far as I'll go.
That's a relief, okay. So is there anybody in the audience who'd like to ask a question, make a comment? If so, this will be the time, otherwise I'm going to go to look at our Zoom audience and see if anybody there is interested. Okay, I'm not, come on up, please.
I didn't even see you, Jim.
I was here and I was at Borah Park and I'm back and anyway, my name is Jim Resnick. I'm with Montgomery County Fire and Rescue. I work on our Community Risk Reduction Section, which is trying to prevent 911 calls for a variety of reasons. And I've been an ex-officio member, I guess, of the Gaithersburg Hoarding Task Force now for probably about eight years or so, eight or nine years. My end of things is trying to keep people safe in their homes, working smoke alarms, working carbon monoxide alarms, a reasonable, realistic, rational fire escape plan if something does happen. And as was mentioned with the hoarding scales that you've seen, we go into people's homes where they're at sevens, eights and nines. And that inability for them to escape if there's a fire or other type of emergency is a big deal. And also it's a life threat for the first responders because when we're crawling around and they're in zero visibility, we can have a collapse of things on us. So the work that this group has done is extraordinary. It's no, it's no surprise that they are a national model that people are seeking. And whatever support can be given to continue and expand the work that these folks is doing, I know that ultimately it comes from the funding from you all. Whatever can be done for that is money well spent and will help to keep the community and the first responders who you don't think of in these situations also safe. So that's my two cents on that.
Thank you very much, Jim. Neil?
Okay, thank you. So again, tackle what everybody said, thanks for your good work. You know, and I was afraid that you were going to tell me to get rid of all my CDs, but I think I'm okay. I'm not, I'm not even at number three on the scale, so I'm okay. But seriously, I was, before this meeting, I was unaware that this work was going on. There are probably people in the community that could use this help that aren't aware either. What can we do to help you get the word out?
Do we want to get the word out?
I don't know if we can get the word.
I mean, it's on our website, it's definitely blasted out to our like provider networks that we use. So a lot of our nonprofits, you know, everybody in the county and all knew about us.
Okay.
Information has gone to the homeowners groups and all the apartment property managers at like our annual events, like our landlord events.
So the people that need to know, know.
Hopefully, we've done our job to help spread the word, but our information can be found on the city website. If you do a search, Hoarding Task Force, it'll pop up right there as well.
All right, that's fine. I probably don't need to know.
And resident managers and HOA folks, when they are, you know, leery of possible situations, they know how to get to Kevin or Emilio and get to the city.
Feel free to reach out to any of us here in community services or in the neighborhood services as well.
But we have tons of those cards if you want to give them out.
Come on up.
Share them, so.
I suppose I think something very important that they have not yet shared with all of the cases that the task force has taken on, every single case that has needed to be in compliance with inspections to be able to, every case has passed. So this is showing the, the impact of the individuals who have chosen to work with the services that the task force has offered. They have been able to make a significant enough change in their living environments that they have been able to pass inspections, they've been able to stay in their residences.
With very little recidivism.
Yes, with very little recidivism. So I think that that's, that's you tooting, you need to toot your own horns on that because that's something that when we think about the, the success rate often with treating hoarding situations, we often hear about they didn't want to do this, the clutter came back, et cetera, et cetera. That hasn't happened here and it's because of their efforts.
Thank you. I wanted to put, if there's anybody on Zoom who'd like to speak to this, just use the raise hand function. I am not seeing hands go up, so we'll leave it there for now. Any other questions or comments before we go to our next topic? Okay, keep on doing this, great. We are proud, we're proud of this. Thank you all. And next, we're going to transition over to our discussion about the Financial Empowerment Center. And I will turn it over to Leslie McDonald.
Thank you, here in council. I'm Leslie McDonald and I'm the project manager in community services. And my job is the Financial Empowerment Center and all the financial empowerment activities that take place in our office. Thank you so much for the opportunity to give you an update today on the Financial Empowerment Center as we near the two-year mark. I introduce to my right here, John Sanchez, who's a project manager for the Financial Empowerment Center with our nonprofit team, which comes out of HIP Housing Initiative Partnership. It's a unique program in that we do have sort of co-ownership of the Gaithersburg Financial Empowerment Center. The city is really the, the head, the, the focus of it, but then the work is done by this really fantastic team from Housing Initiative Partnership. So let me just go to the next slide. I want to introduce the team, of course, myself, John Sanchez, our financial counselors and they're here today, Carrie Cook and Elliot Ortiz. I also wanted to say a big thank you to Carmen Castro Conroy from HIP. She supervises the team from the HIP perspective. And of course, Maureen, who was really in at the ground floor of this financial empowerment work with the first bank on, the first bank on rollout of that program back in 2009. So the city's been doing this work for quite a long time and Maureen was there at the beginning. So that's our team. And here's us at the Bank On Conference last year. I wanted to start by talking about the why, like why do we need a financial empowerment program and a financial empowerment center? And you've all heard this from me before, but basically the model is free, professional, one-on-one financial counseling that's offered as a, as a public service of the city. And I really wanted to point to two different data points to really illustrate why we need this. And the first is the Community Action Self-Sufficiency Study. Now, this is based on a national methodology that looks at the true cost of living in any particular place and analyzes what it really takes to live in that place without public subsidies. And so in Montgomery County, for a family of four with an infant and a school-aged child, you need an income of $122,000, almost $123,000 to live without income supports or benefits. You know, obviously the cost is a little less for a single person or a family without children and in this case, the cost is driven up very much by the cost of childcare. But it really goes to show you that it's an expensive place to live and people are struggling. and people are struggling. Uh, the second, um, data point that I wanted to point you out is, um, the concept of asset poverty. And I can share links on both of these concepts after the presentation. But, um, the asset poverty is, um, it's a measure of financial vulnerability. It's a family that maybe they can pay their bills and they can get by day-to-day, but should there be unemployment or a big car repair or a health crisis, then they, they don't have a way to cope with that without falling into debt. And so here in Gaithersburg, the asset poverty, um, for the whole is 16% of households can be considered an asset poverty. Now, if you disaggregate that by rate, race, you'll find that for the white population, the asset poverty rate is about 9%, whereas for black and Hispanic, Latin populations, due to historic patterns of discrimination and bias, their asset poverty rates are in the 30s. And so this is an issue for people living right here. Um, again, it's a measure of financial vulnerability. It can lead to debt. But if you're in asset poverty, what you really miss is the opportunity to get ahead, to build wealth for your family through homeownership, through education, through saving for your retirement. And so it's not a place where we want people to be. Okay, so this is a framework that was developed by the National League of Cities to sort of show the continuum of work. And I, I like this because when I look at this, um, this chart, I also think about the work of community services as a whole. And most often, we're working in the bucket of economic stability. We're trying to get people stable, housed, um, with jobs, with hopefully, health insurance, meet people, people giving, having the ability to meet their own needs. That's where the bulk of our work is. But if what we look at, what we really want for people, we want people to have economic security, and we want people to have the opportunity to build wealth. So economic security would be stable, full-time employment with benefits, affordable housing, and access to low-cost financial products, including non-predatory loans. And then when we come to wealth building, so if we can get people stable and then work on their economic security with, uh, programs like the Financial Empowerment Center, we can hopefully move people to wealth building, where they're, they're able to save for the down payment on our own. Or they're able to get additional training and get a better-paying job, where they're able to contribute to their child's college education. So that's the continuum that we'd like people to move on. And the financial empowerment piece is a really important part of the continuum. So, uh, those of you who've been around have known, have heard me say this before, but this model is really, comes to us from Cities for Financial Empowerment, which is, um, a Bloomberg-funded charitable organization based in New York City. Um, they currently run the Bank On program, and they rolled out this financial empowerment model right after the, um, 2008 recession. And so, um, the, the concept is that if we can get cities to embrace this work, that they can roll it out and help people in individual communities. So right now, there's about 35 cities with financial empowerment centers, and I'm happy to say that Gaithersburg is actually one of the smallest cities to take this up. So kudos to Gaithersburg. Um, but the features of the model is that the counseling is provided at no cost to the client. It's one-on-one. It's with professional counselors. It's integrated within a network of other services to help the individuals. So if they come to the Financial Empowerment Center and maybe they're eligible for SNAP, the food assistance program, but they're not in it, they get a referral so that it's integrated with all the other services. It's data-driven, and tonight, we're going to give you just a peek at the data system that we use. Government-led, again, housed in municipalities and based there, and that it's a sustainable continuing model. So those are some of the features. And the individual work with people who come to the Financial Empowerment Center starts with a financial health assessment. So we take a look at where the person is and what their financial goals are. Maybe they come because they have a lot of debt, or they want to save for a big goal like a home. And so the team, um, sits with them and makes a health assessment. They look at their credit score. They pull the credit report and walk them through what's out there in terms of their, um, their credit. And, um, from there, they make a plan based on what the person wants to work on. And the four big buckets that we end up working with people on are accessing safe and affordable bank accounts, um, working on credit, approving credit scores so that you can, uh, get insurance or rent an apartment. You need a good credit score for pretty much anything. A big piece of the work is also in debt, getting rid of delinquent accounts and overcoming consumer debt. And then moving people to savings plans so they can save for the future. And so, um, within each of those buckets, we have, um, sort of longer-term outcomes, and you see those in blue at the bottom of the screen. So we start with this app. Maybe somebody has no credit and has never used a bank. That's where we start. And then some of the other outcomes we're going for are increasing their credit scores by 35 points, decreasing consumer debt by 10%, uh, reducing delinquent accounts, setting aside income for the future, and adopting savings behaviors. So that's what we're aiming for. Um, just to give you the timeline. Again, uh, the city adopted Bank On early on. Um, and then in 2019, um, had the opportunity to get a planning grant to see if a financial empowerment center would work well in Gaithersburg. After that, uh, Community Services was able to go ahead and apply for the funding. Uh, Cities for Financial Empowerment does a two-year, $250,000 startup grant. It's matched by the city. Um, and so in 2021, the grant was awarded and the planning process began. Uh, late in the year, HIPH was engaged, and the staff were brought on board and trained through Cities for Financial Empowerment to be financial counselors and to do the work. Um, you may remember in this picture, we did an opening. Uh, we did a soft opening in March of '22, and then a full opening in the summer. And we celebrated that with all of you. Um, so as I mentioned, Gaithersburg is one of 35 cities that are doing this work, um, through Cities for Financial Empowerment. And Baltimore also has a financial empowerment center. Uh, Gaithersburg is the only other city in Maryland to have this model of a financial empowerment center. So currently, we are at the end of our two-year startup grant and, um, you know, doing continuing work. We stay within the Cities for Financial Empowerment family. And we get technical assistance and opportunities to work with our peers around ideas and issues. So one thing I always say about the Financial Empowerment Center is that it's data-driven and outcome-focused. And so here's our data as of the end of January. Um, the team has served 427 clients with over 1,700 counseling sessions. Demographically, our population pretty much mirrors the population of the city. 55% white, 33% black, 4% Asian, 8% multiracial or other. We also look at ethnicity separately from race. Um, just about half our clients are Latino, Hispanic, many Spanish-speaking, and we have the capacity to serve people either in Spanish or English or French. Uh, 77% of the clients are between the ages of 21 to 54, but we serve down to 18. And, um, as, as old as you'd like to be, that's, we'll serve. Um, 89% of the folks who are served to date have incomes under $85,000 a year. So again, when you think about that self-sufficiency, cost of living here in Gaithersburg, you can see that we're serving low and moderate-income folks for the most part. Okay, so here's our results to date. We have 392 client outcomes. And again, this is the end of January. We actually have more. Um, and those are those high-level outcomes that I talked about, like increasing your credit score by 35 points, um, reducing delinquent accounts. So 392, uh, longer-term outcomes. Uh, 56% of the outcomes, uh, relate to non-mortgage or consumer debt. So that's really a lot of the work that the counselors are doing. Uh, clients who have been counseled by the Financial Empowerment Center have managed to set aside $332,000 in savings and have reduced debt across the whole population by $726,000. So remarkable work that the team is doing. Um, I want to give you an opportunity to hear from our counselors about what they're seeing and just give us some, some meat on the bones of the story that I've been telling you. So first up, Carrie Cook. Welcome, Carrie.
Welcome.
Everybody.
Good evening.
Got to find my notes. So thank you, Mayor Ashman and the city council and, um, city manager. Thank you for having me here. Um, yeah, so, um, I wanted to talk a little bit about one of the pieces of our work that we do with clients. Really fun topic of paying off debt. And, um, it's really, it's one of the main things that comes up a lot for, um, our clients at the Financial Empowerment Center. How do people get into debt in the first place? Um, it's, um, it's a question that, um, could probably be answered in more of a, like a dissertation, but, um, probably some of the main things that we're seeing at the FEC are things like, um, folks having limited savings. Um, I'm sure a lot of you have heard, um, you know, um, statistics talking about how most Americans are sort of one emergency away, um, from not being able to make ends meet, not being able to pay their, their monthly bills. Um, and a lot of that has to do with, um, you know, not having saved for the future, not put, not having a rainy day fund, um, an emergency fund. And another piece, um, of this is various life events. You know, obviously, we all, um, uh, lived through one together a couple of years ago, um, but there, there's lots of life events that happen. Job loss, um, moving, divorce, um, uh, you know, um, lots of medical, um, issues that come up. So, um, there are a lot of, a lot of things that lead people to, um, falling into, into debt. And then the last one that I just wanted to mention was, um, honestly, unfortunately, there's not a lot of financial education, uh, for young people, and that's starting to change now, um, thank goodness. Um, but unfortunate, the unfortunate thing is that most of the messages that we get, um, uh, when we're younger about money is, um, negative messages. And so, um, because of this, um, there's just a, a, a lack of, um, money management skills. And that certainly, um, leads, um, people to doing things like leaning on, on credit. So what we teach is, um, really just evaluating uh, what your present situation looks like. What that means is, um, you know, it's how much money is coming in? How much money is going out? You know, none of this is rocket science, but it's very important to have a plan, um, to have a budget, understand what your income is, understand what your, uh, monthly expenses are, and what's left at the end of that month to, to, to pay off your debt. Or to even start in the process of paying on debt. So, um, I wanted to just talk about a, a client experience that I'll share, um, a specific client, client who went through a divorce, um, racked up some debt during that process for a couple, a couple of reasons. Um, one, really just having trouble making ends meet, moving from a, a two-person income, uh, family now to a, a one-person income. But also, this particular client, you know, admitted to me in a session that, um, they really had, um, a lot of, uh, sort of stress spending happening over the last couple of years as well. Um, and that's something that you certainly see a lot of. So, um, you know, basically, you know, they did have a good income, so we, we looked into, um, what was the spending, uh, looking like for any given month? We identified true needs versus wants, um, made some adjustments. And we were able to find about $600 in her budget to, um, start, um, making that a line item to pay back, um, her, all of her creditors. She has, um, a little over $20,000 in consumer debt. And, and so, you know, the hardest part, I always tell my clients, is the beginning, just starting to, to get on course. And, and having a plan of every month, making a payment to your creditors, just like you, you pay for your housing, just like you pay for your food, just like you pay for your transportation. So the really fun part of, of this whole process is, is, you know, when you start to near the end of it, because, you know, it, it takes a lot of focus, it takes a lot of motivation for clients. But then, when you start to get towards the end, you can really begin to see how, um, whatever your goals are or whatever you want to accomplish in the future is starting to become more of a reality. And it's, um, uh, you know, professionally and personally, it's, it's really rewarding work and, um, uh, just wanted to share that with you. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Carrie. And Elliot?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
So I'm the second counselor. You know, I mostly talk, you know, work with the Hispanic community. And, you know, Carrie just mentioned something very important that, um, makes me go back to like the beginning, right? Like, the hardest part is the beginning. And, you know, uh, going back to the beginning, right? Like, many people come in here and they need, they need a friendly face to kind of help them navigate the system, so. I have tried to become that face for them, you know, the, the newcomers. And so, um, I, you know, we have different, um, techniques to coach. And so that's what makes this program unique, that, um, we, we, we're not bankers or looking to try and make a transaction with them. We're actually, um, trying to connect to, with our clients so that we can, um, give them the best advice, right? So going back to the beginning, right? So I, when I, when I have a session with a client, I focus on, on not only ways to save money, but also ways to create money, right? So we, we're always often told to, you know, to, the only way to make money is to go to school, you know, go get a job, and, and that's it. That's how you're gonna be okay, right? Be safe, financially stable. But I mean, in this city, right, uh, there's many resources and many opportunities, and communities, community services that we can, you know, we work together with these communities, um, with these agencies, so we can, uh, create opportunities for our clients, right? And, and one of them is, um, you know, executing, right? Executing on their dreams, you know? People come here looking for a new life, you know, uh, better for their families. And so, you know, since I have already gone through that, I feel like I can teach them, you know, how they can not only make money by working, but by creating more opportunities, by, um, by learning new skills. So I, I feel, I feel proud about what we do. We, you know, Carrie mentioned a story about a client, and I have one as well. For instance, this lady, she lived in, uh, she lived in the shadows for, for as long as, for as long as, who knows? Maybe a few years, right? I mean, ever since she got to the States, you know, she had a tax ID. You know, she was living in a rented apartment until she finally became a, you know, legal citizen, right? She obtained a social security number, and that's when she finally decided to go ahead and start making a life, you know? Before that, she thought that she had to live under the shadows, right? Well, anyway, this lady came to the Financial Empowerment Center in September of 2022, a few months after we, we had the soft opening. Meeting with her for the first time, you know, I realized she wanted to, she wanted to start, you know, having a financial life, getting a bank account, uh, you know, get credit, and, and she wanted to buy a home with, for her family. So after 13 sessions, right? She was able to get a bank account. She, uh, she went to the bank and got a secure credit card, and after a few months, she finally got, uh, she stopped being, um, credit invisible. So she had a credit score of 613. And, um, just a few, a few weeks ago, when we had our last session, she was over 750, you know? But also, she came with very good news that she and her husband, uh, they had applied for a mortgage. They bought a condominium in, uh, the Fireside Condominiums. And, and so they. And, and so they were so happy that they were able to move their family there, you know, finally get something for them, stop paying rent. And, and also, she found a job, you know, where she has benefits, working for M C P S as a custodian. And she's, she feels very thankful to our financial empowerment. And she's still coming to our sessions, she wants to push into more goals. And, and she feels that now she can teach her children, you know, because they, they have more opportunities now. And that's it, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I think one thing that Elliot expressed very well is that sometimes people just need help navigating. You know, they don't know what they don't know, and it's too easy to fall into predatory lending or debt if you don't really know how the systems work. And there are also people who are living under the radar. And if you can get them into, you know, a safe and affordable bank account, then they can begin to build their financial life, their credit, and achieve their goals. So I, I thought that was a beautiful story. Thank you. Oh, go ahead, John.
Well, you know, you can hear now from two different perspectives, right? Because we work with different demographics here in the City of Gaithersburg. We, through these 18 months, we understand there are three different types of clients. We have clients who, they just want to establish their financial identity, so they come from zero newcomers, immigrants, no credit scores, no bank accounts, no secure credit cards, no, no means about what, how the credit works. So we have to educate them, we have to talk to them about the benefits to be part of these services. So that's when the coaching party starts, right? My colleagues, Elliot, Ortiz, and Carrie, who are very remarkable, because they just not have the knowledge. They have those soft skills to connect with those type of clients. So the first category of clients, like I mentioned it, is those who want to establish their financial identity, and they don't have any resources. Then the second type of clients that we have, those who already have the resources, but they don't know how to use it, but because, as you know, we just start early, money never being about how much you have or make or earn, it's about how you behave with that. And that's what the, the team is doing a remarkable job. And the third type of clients is clients who are doing well, but they need maintenance with their resources. They need to figure out where the money goes, what other choices are there available. We're talking about the whole spectrum of financial capabilities. Just, I wanted to mention this.
Great, thank you. Thanks, team. Okay, so we wanted to give you a peek into our data system, which is called FEC Bot. It's a Salesforce-based platform developed by Cities for Financial Empowerment, and it's made available to local sites. And I tell you, this is a real gift. I've never seen a dashboard or a data system like this. As soon as you go onto the website and make an appointment to see a counselor, you choose who you want to see, you choose where and when, what language, and you enter your name in, and you become, into, you get entered into FEC Bot. Every interaction and accomplishment is tracked, and all the outcomes are verified. We have a dashboard that shows the data in real time, and it allows us also to benchmark ourselves against other sites. For example, we recently learned that our retention rates are way higher than many financial empowerment centers. So that's something we love to hear. All right, so let me navigate over. Let's see, actually, John, maybe you can do it, right to here. Right there, click. There we go.
Everyone can see clear that, I mean, I can even, you know, scroll up. This is the real number as today, February 12, 2024. Since we got access to the, this wonderful Salesforce platform, and we can really see what's coming in every, what we're doing every single day, talking about productivity, accountability from the team. 1,820 sessions, that's, that's remarkable for two counselors, right? Then we have over 439 clients that have today. That's also very remarkable, 439 with multiple sessions. And you can see here in this particular dashboard that there, there are more than, well, 26% of them come just once, then maybe another 19, twice. And then, ooh, we're talking about 64% of people come more than twice. That's very important, because people sometimes come with a mindset, what is there for me? This is social services? No, this is intangible, we're gonna change your life. But it requires a time commitment, requires a team work effort. And the team does a tremendous job to connect individually with those clients. We have...
Ooh, you gotta scroll up.
What I did, what I did.
Scroll up.
I need my glasses. I was pretending to not use my glasses. Right, so I just try to be, don't use glasses, but I guess that's what it is. All right, and then we can see also that we can track sections by week. It's like, this is the trademark, you know, we, we see how many, how many sessions we have per week. So by the team, there's a lot of sessions, right? And also, let's go back to this. We have also identified our clients that they're mostly renters. We also identified that 63% of those clients are female. As Leslie mentioned it, we have a variety of demographics between Hispanic and non-Hispanic clients. 65% of those clients are in this age group, between eight, since we take everybody from 18 up to 60, to 65 up. You see, we have 28 clients that are over 65, so we're working with the senior population too. But mostly, you can see there are a remarkable number, over 60% of clients, that they're in the demographics between 21 to 55. All right, then, we're gonna see also that we have mostly people who rent, as, as Leslie mentioned it, and most of them coming from three particular Ccos, 20877, 2088, and 2089. All right, now, this, what, what this dashboard is telling us in real time for, for donors or potential founders is to understand how, what, how, what we do, who is a real client who got, obviously, a personal story. There are lots of confidentiality about this data, there's notes, there's homework for each one. It's not achievable without that. Then we want to talk about another remarkable dashboard. Those outcomes that just Leslie mentioned it, but that change with time. So 409 outcomes, since we start, 143 clients benefit from there. Mostly, mostly of them are related, let me show you this. There are 330 outcomes that represent 81%, 81% of clients that get benefit from paying off delinquent accounts, improved FICO scores by 35 points, and by then, reduce debt 10%. They're achievable outcomes, right? But this is a big number, because it's, what we do is guiding clients to pay off their debt. It's no money, we don't, we just guide, we coach the client what they have to do. And that worked perfectly well, especially with the immigrant community. Then we have that magic number that Leslie was talking about. Since we started in March 2022 as today, that's the amount of people safe. And that's again tracked by this wonderful platform, Salesforce. Same scenario with this number, and remember, it's total non-mortgage debt reduce. And also, we have remarkable, for that happen also comes with remarkable achievement, individual achievement related to how people create a budget, how people access to emergency financial assistance through different resources, how we develop a comprehensive manageable payment plan for them. So there are many, it's a lot of work to understand what, what we do here. We address identity theft scenarios, we connect with a lot of vocational training opportunities for them. So all of them made that case happen. And also, I would like to talk about the, the referrals entities here. That mostly, if you see Housing Initiative Partnerships, say 179, is mostly because we are, we are out there on the field, meeting people, and outreach activities. And we, we work very close with the Community Services Division under Maureen, right? You already talked about it, right?
Yeah, we just need, we're almost out of time.
Right, okay, perfect. I don't know, it's just these numbers that really matters, and I, I open to any questions, relevant questions that you must have.
Yeah, I have a couple other things, and then we'll go to questions. Can you click right there?
Here?
Go back to the PowerPoint, like this one.
Okay.
There we go. Oh, I don't know where the PowerPoint.
I don't know. Maybe this is well.
Try it, nope, that one, there. Okay, nope, that's already task force. There we go. Thank you. Okay, little technical difficulties. So anyway, again, these are the outcomes. Going the wrong way. So that's where we are, and we're planning now for three, year three and beyond. Continuous community outreach and partnership development, and that's what John really works hard on, just getting out in the community, making sure all our nonprofit partners are sending folks to the Financial Empowerment Center, and, you know, going to every school, open house, and, and parent night to be there with a table and information to get people in the door. We still, of course, have the Financial Wellness Coalition, and they're providing the financial education that we're doing here, there, and everywhere, and our monthly webinar series. We're getting to work on an exciting program for the summer called Summer Jobs Connect, where we're bringing banking access and financial education to the summer youth who are employed here in Gaithersburg. We're still working a sustainability plan to bring in outside funds, and really keeping our focus on financial mobility for city residents. And I just want to say thank you for your support and of this program. You know, that's the reason why it's here and why we continue is through your support. And we ask you, send people to us. You know, make sure that you tweet and post about the FEC. And if you can connect us to people who may be interested in funding it, that's better too. But most of all, let people know about it, and send us referrals. So thank you again for your support, and we'll take your questions.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for sharing the stories and, and the analytical tools, and appreciate it. Questions, comments? Jamil?
Just a few. This topic's really, really interesting to me, as when I moved into Montgomery County, I made all the mistakes in terms of, you know, buying a car with the 20% interest rate instead of finding a credit union, having 550 credit score, spending above my means. And so I wish this, you know, service like this would have been available when I first came in. So thank you for everything that you have, have done. Question on the 439, the people that are coming through. So you talked about, you know, the, the three categories, and people who are not in the financial system, so you're getting them, so they're banked, you know, efficiently, people, you know, going through the different ones. You know, people get into debt through medical emergencies, loss of job, car repair, paycheck anticipation loans, high interest, you know, credit cards, all the above. Is there a theme or a specific financial product that you see in that 439 cohort that's the biggest culprit or the biggest reason why somebody's been in debt?
Credit card?
Credit card also, well, in the immigrant communities about car loans that you're talking about.
Buy here, pay here.
Right. That, you know, those things take companies, obviously, but in the immigrant communities also about that they don't understand how credit works. They're related to credit cards, they don't know it's about to establish their financial identity when they pay rent, the car insurance policy, when they write your credit report. In particular with car loans, there are a lot of, unfortunately, people paying over 15, 20% in car loans. And that's why our team does a terrific job, that after improve that credit score, like you say, they can relocate, refinance their car loan with our remarkable credit union here in, in the area. Yeah.
Thank you.
Leo?
So you showed us a bunch of charts and things from your, from your CRM. Is that, can we get access to those directly, or do we have to wait until next year to see more numbers?
I can show you numbers any day you want. Unfortunately, you can't easily download these data charts. That's like the one drawback here. And so, like, when we did our one-year report last year, we recreated the charts with the data. But I, I can, I can run you through it anytime, and we're actually working on a two-year report right now, so we'll do the summary of the first two years. But the, the data refreshes, you know, all the time. And so I'm always happy to show anybody who's interested in the data.
I can't log in myself.
No, it's the confidentiality issue. We only have four licenses for FEC Bot, so it's the three people in the team, and then, and then me. And even Maureen and Carmen don't have FEC Bot licenses.
If some of the clients are watching this, that will be overwhelming for them. But just I want to check a data there, you can see that the demographics there about the income. We just, we have 49 clients over $85,000, 49. So we, that's what I tried to explain, is that the moment that we think in this, it's for everyone. Everyone who really, and, you know, not necessarily struggle, who understand what, what it takes to be financially, I don't know, understand the long-term of other financial well-being. And that's what, what we do. And we have, again, from everywhere, nonprofit employees, professionals. Okay, city, I didn't want to say that, but city employees too. And we just want to spread out the word, because this program, this project was starting in New York in the Bronx, and expanding to other cities, and it's growing, growing, but it's nothing like this in Montgomery County. It's a lot of FECs, but it's about workshops, it's about, it's not this hard work or one-on-one counseling that pay off with time.
All right, well, thank you for the good work. The numbers are impressive, and I'm glad you're sharing them with us.
Lisa?
Thanks. Thank you, thank you, thank you to you both, Jonathan and Leslie, for this information, and Carrie and, I don't know, I'm saying Elliot. I was, wanted to say it correctly. Thank you for, for the customer stories, those are, I, they just put a smile on my heart. Thank you both for sharing. Looking through those numbers, and, you know, historically, we know the stories with, with our immigrant community, with the minority community of predatory lenders and for car loans, credit card loans. Is there anything, as you're, as you're seeing this over and over again, that may be created to, to resolve some of these items? Are you, are you seeing any initiatives that maybe could get kicked off, or other people that we should be bringing in to, to address these issues at a, at a larger scale?
Yeah, you're right, it's a completely systemic issue. And, you know, we have been connected with the Consumer Finance Protection Bureau, and have gone to workshops there, and also consumer protection in the county. I, I, you know, I would think that a, a big education campaign about predatory lending would be something that we could look at. You know, through public service announcements and things like that. And I'm actually pounding on the door of the Consumer Protection here to say, can we do this together? You know, like we promote VITA, the tax, free tax preparation. We need to, you know, also educate people about the predatory lending. So, yeah, education is a big piece of that.
Thank you.
Jim?
Thanks, Mayor, Leslie, and John, good to see you, as always. Thank you for all the great work, and to Carrie and Elliot, that's, that's a lot, that's a lot of sessions. And it's got to make you feel really, really good to, especially as you establish relationships with your clients and see those positive outcomes. You mentioned on your, your thank you slide, needing help to pursue funding to sustain. You mentioned that the two-year grant will be expiring. What does that landscape look like as far as other grant options to help fund that going forward?
We're looking under every rock and the seat cushions. No, I mean... We're looking under every rock and the seat cushions. No, I mean, the city is sustaining a big, the biggest chunk of the program, and that's wonderful. And we are looking right now to see not fully funding the cost at Housing Initiative Partnership. And so I work very closely with their development team, and we're writing grants. We've written one to the county, which unfortunately hasn't been ruled on yet. Community Foundation, we have a grant, and we're going to, this year, really focus more on our financial partners, you know, grants from the banking institutions, they all have programs, we just need to get in on them. A R P is the grant we're applying for right now, so we're really looking very broadly. We're also exploring a partnership with a local hospital to serve a small portion of their employees that are like in a training program, and that would be a grant for service arrangement that would help subsidize the cost of the service. So we are looking at everything.
That's fantastic. Your data shows that a large percentage of the people who are participating are renters. Are we, are our larger multifamily property owners, are they participating in the programs where paying your rent on time is showing up on your credit?
That's a good question. Do you know if local landlords are participating in helping people build credit through the reporting rent?
No, not yet. And that's a good initiative, because there are not many, you know, resources for that. They shouldn't report in rent, but I think it's a fee. It will be, it should be a free program available locally here. That will help a lot of renters to improve their credit score.
Yeah, I know.
We couldn't find one who is free.
Yeah. In September of 2022, Fannie Mae launched a pilot program called the Positive Rent Payment Pilot, and the multifamily owners who are financing through Fannie Mae can sign up, and they can report the positive rent histories to build credit.
Yeah, that would be another tool.
Yeah, so.
Really good idea.
Yes, so if that's, if there's a way to recruit our multifamily partners, or landlords, to engage in this program, I think that'd be a great way to help them.
Yeah.
That's a great idea. Also, we're working with homeowners who, the household is no more than 60K to get access to the Maryland homeowners tax credit, and reduce their mortgage payment by 10, 15%. And that's, that's, that's key component, that's what is next to. But, yeah, I'm going to look up on that, because I look for other resources for renters, we even looked through Experian Booster, that how you can get your, but it's a lot of confidentiality issues there, in terms that people are going to share, you know, personal information, and how really improve that particular FICO credit score.
We'll go to Rob.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. It's always good to hear about the great things that go on in the city, and it feels like you're building upon where we were last year. I appreciate the increased metrics. I think one of the points that we made last year was, you know, in reporting the metrics, make sure you're capturing all of the impacts in the community, because that helps us then gauge the support for the program. Question on the, the grant that is expiring. Now, my recollection from that is that as an obligation of the grant, we were required to provide services outside of the city's borders.
Well, actually, I can't really speak to that as it initially was set up, because that was before I came here. But when we opened, we were serving the three zip codes, whether or not they were city residents. And then, you know, after we kind of got really going and got started, and had a good footprint, starting July 1, we're only serving Gaithersburg residents.
Okay.
And city employees.
Okay. I think in our last conversation on this, we asked you to explore, if we were to continue the services outside the city, to explore county funding and things like that, did that pan out at all, or?
You know, we applied, the last time the county had a sort of open call for underserved populations through the new grants office, and unfortunately, that grants office has been very backlogged. So we, when we applied last March, I want to say, and we haven't heard yet.
Yeah.
We haven't heard no, we haven't heard yes either. So, but we'll keep knocking on the door. We've, you know, met with a couple council members, and we're continuing to do that.
Have we considered pursuing state money? I think there's at least one state representative that might be.
Well, it's interesting you should ask, because, right, there's a bill up HB, and I can't remember the number, that's been proposed to fund financial empowerment centers, mostly new centers in the state. So that's going to be in front of the legislature this, this session, I believe. So, yeah, I mean, you know, there's a lot of avenues that other cities have pursued, that, so we're always looking to see what other people are doing. You know, if you can get, you know, in line to serve people coming out of Taniff, there's a grant source there. So we're just, you know, working our way around the county.
Okay. I guess the last question is a Tanisha question. So we don't provide financial counseling as a fringe benefit for employees? I think it's pretty standard for benefits packages.
I'm not aware that that's a standard benefit, but this is available to our employees.
So. Yeah, and we're constantly pushing it out with all the different employee groups.
You heard a story during the one-year celebration of one of our community services employees who took advantage of the FEC and bought her first home. So we have lots of stories like that among city staff.
Family of financial services in Northrop quite lacking as far as counseling. They tried to sell me products. It was a benefit that was articulated in our fringe benefit.
All right, looking around, I don't, is there anybody who wants to add any comments or questions from the audience? Let me just check on Zoom.
And I'll say while you're checking, you can make an appointment right from the website on the FEC page, you go to the bottom, and it says make an appointment, you click there. So it's really easy to refer people.
Right, and we actually don't have anybody on Zoom at the moment, so. So thank you all very much for the presentation, and we look forward to continued success and results from this program, which we're all very proud of.
Well, thank you for the opportunity and for your continued support.
Thank you.
All right, I will note that the next meeting we have is not Monday because of President's Day, it is Tuesday, February 20. Will be the next regular session of the mayor council, and want to wish everybody Happy Valentine's Day. And until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.